This meeting is being recorded. Is there anybody else here recording? Please raise your hand. And David, you're recording?
I am.
First order of business is approval of a minutes from August 4th. Any discussions from the board in a minute? George?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second?
First off, I wanted to say, I thought these were wonderful segments. And despite what we were just talking about, David, as far as just the air bonus, the presentation by Director Warner was very important and it was very complicated. And I thought it was captured in excellent.
That's true.
As a record of to refer back to.
It was good.
I said that before I get nitpicky. And then I got a bit of nitpicking. And that's on the last page of the second motion on the A and R. It says that authorize the chair to endorse the A and R, but it actually, the board already done that that should be to sign the A and R. So just change the word endorse to sign on that.
All right.
That's it for me.
Anything else from anybody? Are you all in favor?
I agree.
Closed. Extentions. Very good. Okay, our first, second order of business this evening is a presentation by the mayor about potential zone change out on the French King. This is in response to the idea of thinking about how to create more, more land available for the sorts of businesses that are in the land industry district to be able to move into into this particular zone, which is currently, I believe, is currently zone general commercial. And there's some, there's disparity between what kinds of uses are allowed in one of those zones and what are the other zones. So just thinking about what are, what are the uses in both of those zones, re-gegen ministry and how might we, we, we create a zone in this area that's responsive to Greenfield's, Greenfield's needs and the needs of its current business owners and potential future business owners. And so that, I'm, yes?
No, I'm sorry. I don't know if you have that in mind for the recording.
Yes.
You did, okay, that's right.
Yeah, so we're gonna, we're gonna hear from the mayor, we're gonna hear from a potential, from a local business owner who's potentially interested in moving into this area. We're going to accept, you know, questions and comments from the public, if you have any, any thoughts or questions you want to share about, about this idea. And then, and then it's gonna actually be a discussion there for the board on behalf of the presentation. So again, be welcome, dialogue back and forth. And so Mayor Wiederger, do you want to take it away?
I certainly will, thank you. Feels wonderful to be sitting at the floor table once again. Thank you.
Oh, yes, good.
But I have, I have all the joy in the Lord. That's a good thing. And good evening, folks. So one of the things that I think many of us have known for a long time, certainly those of us who are, have been working in the planning end of, of Greenfield, in the development end of Greenfield, is that we are, we are very built out. We don't have a lot of options for the kind of growth that we need to expand our tax base. You know, there's the type of growth that we can expand downtown, do upper story development, all of that. Community and economic development department and the mayor's office are certainly working on those opportunities. But for people who need a campus type thing or a larger space, we, we have very little land that we can do that. We value our farmland, so it's not as if we drive out of North Greenfield, you see lots of vacant land or land that's, you know, open and you go, well, we've got plenty of land, but we don't because a lot of that is farmed. So one of the things that I'm always interested in, it goes back to my days as a planning board, is how can we adapt our zoning and how can we make the best use, the highest and best use of what property we have available? So I've been thinking about this for some time and I'm now ready to propose to the planning board, changing the zoning in the, along the French King area. From general commercial to something that is more suited to, and is more open to industrial. And the general commercial certainly does some of that. And when I say industrial, I mean light manufacturing, advanced manufacturing and that sort of thing. And, and certainly out there in the general commercial zone, but it's not, there are other options that are allowed out there too. So thinking about a way to expand the options for industrial zoning. Well, I have a short presentation, it won't go on forever, I'll just get started. So we have two zones in our zoning ordinance that accommodate industry. We have the industrial, the general industrial, which is short form, GI. And the purpose of that zoning area is to provide areas for light industry and manufacturing, which do not intrude on residential areas. And that's another thing, it's very difficult in Greenfield. Again, because we are built out, we do go, our industrial heritage goes way back, and so way back, they built factories and then they built housing for the people that work in them. So a lot of our, our buildings, older buildings in tenor, once used for industry, are in, are in residential areas. So that, you know, again, these days we need more space as a general rule. And the other industry is, the other zone is planned industry, or PI, and that's primarily the industrial part. I don't believe there's another PI zone in, in the city that I recall. And that is to promote the industrial development of the city by providing a zone for park-like development of industry, which is protected from commercial and residential encroachment, while minimizing potential adverse environmental impacts. So that would be our planned industry, our industrial park. So I've sort of framed the need. I have a layer, so I don't think it adjusts that screen. Greenfield needs more livable wage jobs, that's the other factor about this. We need to be not only growing our tax base, but we need to be able to grow our jobs base as well. The I-91 industrial park is the primary location for the city's manufacturing employers. We have one of them here this evening, Mr. Capshaw, Steve Capshaw from BSS Valley Steel stamp. There are other, what I call homegrown manufacturing employee employers out there. Beet Fog Nozzle, quite a few others, including SWM, which is not a homegrown business. Steve started his business here in Greenfield, nested the Beet family for the Beet Fog Nozzle. And as far as I know, they all want to stay, but they're challenged when they need to expand. It is home to many advanced manufacturing employers, employing hundreds of local people. I call that a little, a little-known secret for the city of Greenfield. When I am talking to other mayors or out at different meetings with other people from around the state, I like to say that Greenfield is, is the advanced manufacturing hub of Western Massachusetts, because we have so many advanced manufacturers who pay very good jobs, wages, have good working conditions and so forth, in our industrial park. So the city should be able to assist with expansion of those existing manufacturers and be able to attract new manufacturers. But the problem is, as I've said before, we are running out of space in the industrial park to develop or to have existing businesses significantly expand. Nobody knows that better than Steve and MJ, as we begin to talk to people about where they can either expand their businesses or, or locate new businesses. And the I-91 industrial park, as good as it is, is practically built out. I would say almost a hundred percent, you know, ninety, ninety percent built out, if not more. It is zone land industrial, as I mentioned before, and it is the only PI zone that we have. It is so much better. It was built in the early eighties. It consists of 268.3 acres on property that was given to the city. And this is just an aside, a little-known fact about the industrial parks is that the Wiederger family was on the front of the first brochure that was done to attract businesses to the city on our porch, Jake's street. It contains thirty-six parcels, most of them are occupied, others are literally not buildable. Wetlands and steep slopes make some existing vacant spaces undesirable for new build or expansion. In fact, I mean, it's either nearly impossible to build on it or would be very expensive to build on. So it's a wonderful asset that we have, and we do have an opportunity that we've been working on for some time now for a, an expansion up in that upper right-hand corner. Am I correct, MJ, up in that general direction? There is some property up there that's currently occupied by the Mackin family that could become available for expansion in the near future. By near future, we mean not, not tomorrow, you know, a couple of years, maybe, hopefully not that long. MJ's office has certainly been working on it for some time. So what's the solution? We want to create a new industrial zone to attract and accommodate new and expanded manufacturing and advanced manufacturing facilities. And what is advanced manufacturing, as opposed to some other kind of manufacturing, or what literally is also called heavy manufacturing? It's manufacturing that uses innovative technologies to create existing products and the creation of new products. We have a rich industrial, innovative industrial heritage here. So it is, it is in keeping with Greenfield to, as innovation expands, how we manufacture for us to embrace that and bring it to Greenfield. And advanced manufacturing can include production activities that depend on information, automation, computation, sensing, and networking. It is a little more high-tech. What I want you to see, and can't very well, and I'm sorry, is that graph in the bottom. It's a, it came, it's about a year old, but I don't think it's changed much. It's from, actually, it's two years old. It's from ZipRecruiter in 2020. It is an example of the wages that advanced manufacturers pay. And you can see right there that it is, it is specifically about Greenfield, it has Greenfield on there. So you can see sort of the median one is, is eighty-three, five, forty-five a year, about forty dollars an hour. You can start at about twenty-two thousand dollars a year and eventually go up to a hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars, people who are employed. Nationwide, advanced manufacturing salaries are eighty-three thousand, five hundred and forty-five dollars. In Greenfield, median of eighty-two thousand, three hundred and forty-eight. And that's not my figures, I didn't make those up, but, but it is something that I found at ZipRecruiter. So the proposed new zone option that I'm thinking about, and I have no, I mean, I certainly worked with the planning board and made some recommendations, but this is just some thinking that I've been doing about this. So it's to create a second planned industrial zone. That's, that's one of the options that we can choose by changing this area from general commercial to PI. And that would automatically carry then over the use, use regulations for, for the, for the area. And by the way, let me explain where that area is. So it, it's in the upper right-hand corner there. That is a property that goes out to, it's where Route Two and I-91 kind of connect, you know, that, that Route Two off of the French King Highway. So you take the ride, you get on Route Two, you go across and you're at the industrial zone. And that's that upper, upper right-hand corner. And it goes all the way to King Road, and that's that crosshatched area there. I'll, I'll explain a little bit more about that in the next slide. If you'll recall, a few years ago, there was, there was very lengthy meetings involving what was called the Big Box Project that would be going there. Not Big Box Number One, which was in ninety-three-ish, but this was in the early two thousand. So that property is still there, it's under lease right now, it's Stop &amp; Shop. And we have had some discussions about being able to, a business owner wanted to purchase the property, Stop &amp; Shop won't let go of the lease that they have. That's just an aside. So it's already been targeted as an area for development, but for retail development, not manufacturing. So one zone could be basically a map change, a change of what I call a zoning map change, changing it from general commercial to PI. Or we could be a little bit more creative and think about a new, creating a new industrial zone designation. So we could potentially call it the IC Zone, Advanced Industrial and Commercial. So it could be industrial with some selected commercial. So what would be the advantage of one or the other of those? What that lot, that, that, what you show, what we're showing you there is, is taking, is not just the one section that I was speaking of, that, that the Big Box was slated to be, it will not be built. By the way, I did leave that out. The Saruzi Industries, or Saruzi Investment Company, does not intend to ever build any retail development there, that we know. In fact, they're selling off most of their properties. And so it's, in order to really make that, I can't remember exactly how much of that area is, it's maybe fifteen acres.
Ten acres.
Ten acres, which is developable. It does not include that piece in front of it that is owned by, so, but in this area, it is owned by the city of Greenfield and is, is pretty much protected, not officially protected, but, you know, it was part of the discussion when we were discussing the Big Box Project. So we must decide, the planning director, Eric Cora, could be here tonight, and I spoke, and he, he thought it would be best not to just rezone that one specific space, but while we're at it, why not let, let's think about a much larger area that we could, we could make available, simply by rezoning it. Nobody's moving anybody, nobody's buying the, nobody's bought the property yet. It's just zoning it so that it is available. So it is forty-eight acres. That crosshatched area that you saw, it's forty-eight acres approximately. It offers forty-eight acres designated strictly for manufacturing and industrial development, if we were to call it a PI zone. It creates opportunity to bring higher paying jobs to Greenfield, that's an advantage for sure, and the development increases the tax base significantly. What are its potential disadvantages of that, of doing a PI zone there, an additional PI zone? You don't really have an opportunity to develop selected retail areas to serve the local neighborhood and employees of the industrial development. So we do know that we have Stop &amp; Shop out there, it's a grocery store used by many people, not just from Greenfield, but coming in from surrounding areas. And we have other, a few other types of retail in that general area. We don't have any restaurants, we don't have any personal care services to speak of there, hair salons, that type of thing, barber shops. We don't have ATMs, we don't have that. If you go travel around like I used to do in my previous work before I became mayor, travel around the country to other areas with industrial parks or designated industrial zones, you can almost, you can always find, many of them are adjacent to or have within their grounds some limited selected commercial development, you know, a place for people who work there to go eat, or maybe more than one place for people to go there to eat. So if we were strictly for manufacturing and industrial development, that would not be allowed in that zone. And I don't particularly have a dog in that fight one way or the other yet. And I say yet, you know, I, I, I think, I like the idea of maybe offering some other types of very selective retail options, which you could do if, if this would involve revising or creating a new type of zone of the landlord. So in the IC Zone, which is what I'm thinking of there, the advantages are similar to the ones in the DI in terms of its availability to manufacturing. It would offer forty-eight acres of mixed-use development of mostly manufacturing with selected retail options, as I said, restaurants, personal services, salons, package stores, a bank, or ATM, a gym, et cetera, those types of things. No grocery stores, we don't need grocery stores, we have a very nice grocery store in that general vicinity, and that type of thing. So commercial options can serve employees of industrial properties and residents in the surrounding neighborhoods. The development, regardless of which one it is, is increases tax, it will, would increase the tax base. The IC Zone disadvantage would be potentially less area for manufacturing, industrial development, if, you know, for instance, someone wanted to purchase one of the smaller properties and put a restaurant or something down it. As I said, I'm not making a specific recommendation to the planning board on which one of those, I leave that up to them to deliberate and discuss, and certainly be able to, you know, join in that discussion, but, you know, I think it would be up to them to decide what would be the optimal way to go. And that brings us to discussion and questions. And I can say, I feel a little lost, I'm happy to hear about and help answer questions if I need to.
Thanks, Mayor Wiederger. Steve Capshaw, do you want to add on to any mayor's thoughts?
Yeah, I think, you know, the one thing that I would talk about is just sort of our experience. We've been talking to the mayor, the MJ Adams, for a little bit, a little while now. So we've grown over fifty years from two employees to two hundred.
Sorry, who are you? I'm just interested to know.
I'm Steve Capshaw, I'm the owner of BSS in the industrial park. So I'm interested in arguing for this.
Of course, yes.
So we've grown like crazy, particularly over the last decade. So we are constrained to four acres in the industrial park. So we bought a building about ten years ago there that was decrepit with twenty thousand square feet, expanded it in 2012, built a second building, we're now at forty-five thousand square feet. We've grown over that time from twenty-eight to two hundred employees, just like this statistic said, our average wage is about eighty-five thousand dollars, full paid medical, hundred percent match 401K, countless other benefits, internal training programs, we don't hire, we, we hire at twenty dollars an hour with zero skills out of high school. So we are the types of jobs, it occurs to me, that in my lifetime, Greenfield has been losing for fifty straight years. And this is the first time in my life I've heard that there's a strategic plan to bring middle-class jobs back to Greenfield. So right now, what's been going on in the last year with us is we are at our limit. We just bought up a piece of wetlands essentially from the town so that we can expand our parking. We're trying to squeeze out a little bit more manufacturing space with another building programs that would be on top of wetlands, so we've got to see if we can get through that. But our goal isn't to get to this point, our goal is to go from now sixty million in sales to four hundred million in sales, or a thousand employees. We need to do that near here. So we have enormous amounts of capital, but the capital's not important to us, the employees are. So we generally have employees that are twenty miles north, east, west, south, so we don't want to move far from this spot. But what we find is, we can't find anything in Greenfield. There's nothing. As we branch out of Greenfield, there's not much more. Companies like us, up and down the valley and throughout the northeast, are dying to find industrial land to be able to build, you know, our metal buildings in the way that we look. So we're looking to build a headquarters. We are looking outside the area now, we've been working with the town for months on end, but we've been talking to the Saruzi, we've been talking to the, the Saruzi property itself is eighteen acres that's buildable, Lot One there. And if you combine that with the Mackin site, and what I would refer to as the APR land, which should have been industrial land at the end of Greenfield Street, that's twice what the top four manufacturers in the industrial park are now, that would, that's a thousand jobs right there. Us, Beet Fog Nozzle, two hundred employees, each SWM I think is at about four hundred. So if you add in the fourth employer there, which I assume is Coca-Cola, that would be on about twenty-five acres, a thousand employees. So if you can find more industrial land, the number of jobs which can be generated in Greenfield, and employers that are fighting like cats and dogs right now to hire people, all of us are recruiting each other's employees, paying more wages, which is a great thing. This is what Greenfield's needed forever. And the more that you can generate that demand for jobs, the higher wages are going to go. And I've never seen in my, this has been something that's bothered me my whole life. You know, as I watched Greenfield, the town I was born in and grew up in, quite frankly, decayed. When I walked, drive through the middle of town, you see the housing stock decay, decade after decade. Expanding the industrial zone will fight that. I won't weigh in on the different options here, I think the IC is kind of a waste, given that you have all of Main Street and Federal Street. But I'm a huge proponent of this. It would, it would certainly benefit us, but a bunch of companies within Greenfield would fight over that land, and a number of companies outside of Greenfield would fight over that land. I think it would be a great thing for the town.
Thank you. Great, thanks. So, you know, the planning board is thinking about and considering this, wondering exactly how to, you know, how to push a little bit this forward. It's really helpful, I think, to get input and information from you folks. And so we welcome questions, input, there's no sign-in sheet, but it's not, it's not a super crowded room, so feel free to raise your hand and, and, well, I saw Councilor Almer's hand first.
I just had a question about the...
Oh, yeah, so, yeah. Just press it to stand for a little bit.
Oh, yeah. Phil Almer.
And then quick name and address, yeah.
Yeah, Chestnut Hill. What, is there water, sewer, electricity there?
Yes.
All three?
Uh huh, all three.
Mr. Norman?
Members of the board, my name is Al Norman, Twenty-One Burnell Street. Last February, I received a call on my cell phone from someone who identified themselves as someone who was interested in expanding their industrial footprint and wanted to come to Greenfield to do that. And they described their proposal and their employment, asked some questions about starting wage benefits and so forth. And this person said to me, Al, how do you, how would you personally feel about that? You know, I wanted to know what you think about it. And my reaction at that time was, it's the best news I've had in thirty years. Now, on September twenty... Now, on September 20th, I will have a article in the paper with that headline. And what I'm going to be describing, I went back into the archives of the recorder and looked for statements that I had made since 1993 when the Walmart battle came up, which was on the other side of the Route 2A and the netland is now, and by the way, is a Tinnawak, larger parcel, by the way. They, they had proposed 165,000 square foot retail store, the, the town was dealing with it. And I went back and looked at my statements, I went back and looked at the statement by the Franklin County Chamber of Commerce back in 93, and then up to 2004, when this pink land that you see here, looks pink to me anyway, it was changed from, I think it was GI to general, general, general industrial to general commercial, which was something I opposed. But I said at that time and all the other times, up to, up recently to 2017, about four or five times in op-eds in the recorder, statements from me about the biggest buck that you can get from your land that's available, that's vacant, that's not already committed, is to have industrial development. And I, I said, I indicated that there was a study called consensus that said the same thing, the Chamber of Commerce said it would be a shame to give away, to waste land that is industrialized zone that could produce the, the $26 an hour and up kind of job. And so to me, I sent a, I sent an email to the mayor when I heard about this proposal, saying that I was completely supportive of that. I told the person who called me I was completely supportive of that. I've always seen a much more significant return for Greenfield from this kind of zoning than from more retail zoning. That's why I don't, I'm not crazy about the IC idea, but I do think the planned industrial makes more sense. This is an area that you, you will recall, that in 2004, when it was zoned for, the zoning at the time, actually, we have to fast forward through the library vote, when the library was being discussed, there was a trade-off of votes, you could remember, all remember this deal, where the, the idea was that one councillor said, I will vote for this library if the council will vote to rezone, you know, to, to make an amendment to what was already a commercial zone to allow fast food restaurants, drive-through restaurants, and gas stations, which I thought was an absolutely horrendous deal, but the year before, the same proposal that it presented to the, the planning board, and the planning board voted against it, by the way. And it was withdrawn, the idea to, to rezone that for fast food and gas stations was withdrawn. The only reason it was allowed to happen was it was a trade-off vote on the library. Unfortunate, but what can you say about historic events at this point? So I'll just end by saying this, I, I strongly encourage the planning board to support the PI zone for this area. I do agree with Steve Capshaw that this land will be in demand. People told me back in 93, you're crazy to think that industrial land is needed in this town. There's, there's no one that wants to, to zone, and we watched companies like Heat Fad, and there were a few that, that couldn't find industrial space and left. And I, I remain convinced that this was the way to go. That's why I'm so delighted that, if I had to wait 30 years to see it, it's okay because this land is fortunately still available. And so I strongly urge you to support this PI. I can't think of a single reason why, that I could speak against it. And I'm delighted to be affirmatively supporting something that I think is of great value to the city. And as I say, the skeptics have seen over time that this is now, this is now useful land, valuable addition to Greenfield. And I hope you'll move forward with it as quickly as possible. And I thank the mayor to her credit for doing this, and I'm going to be saying that in my column. I thank Ann Hamilton back in 1993 for saying it. And it's, this is an idea whose time has been here for a long time and is now coming to fruition, I hope. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, if you could just state your name and address, please.
Hi, I'm Pat Tweed, 42 Adams Road. I am the current president of the Greenfield Country Estates, which is in the middle of the industrial park at the moment. We have 65 residential units, most of them zone low income. One of my concerns, and my only concern, has been brought up before when we were looking at the big bucks, and that regarded traffic flow. Right now, the traffic at times can be horrendous going through the intersection of Adams Road, French King, and Route 2. Most of that may be driven by the General Pierce Bridge being closed and might be absolved by that, it might not. So one of my concerns, being a resident literally at that intersection, is that we take traffic flow into consideration before we do anything like this again. One of the things that I was thinking about as I watched stuff develop through the newspaper, some of the articles that Mr. Norman wrote, some of the other stuff that was presented around removing the overlay district and everything else, had to do with the traffic. And the question that comes to my mind that would have to be addressed by you folks is, can you get a curb cut off of Route 2 rather than off of French King Highway? Because you might be able to create a better traffic flow if you pulled the traffic that was going into those industrial park, those industrial spots along that spot. If you came in off of Route 2 rather than routing the traffic through the four-way intersection up French King Highway, you know, which is a two-lane highway, and then trying to make turns into that area. I don't know what the ramifications are, I don't know how mass DOT would have to deal with that because it is, of course, a state highway. But those are some of the considerations that we have. One of the other considerations that I've noticed, I've been president now for almost, almost six years, and we have had generally good relations with our neighbors, which is the industrial park, but bringing more industrial-type things in there has its potentials, 3:00 AM deliveries of large containers and stuff like that, sound travels, especially during the winter. We didn't realize the Roasters was open until we smelled it several times over the winter because we were getting the emissions from the Roaster directly across the street. Our nearest unit to the Roasters is about 300 feet. SWM behind us, we had some issues, we managed to work with them and, and have them change their delivery times for their large containers, because again, they were being delivered at 3:00 AM, and we had people that are 50 feet away from SWM through just a, a small screening trees. So because of where we're located and the fact that we're probably not going to move anytime soon, we would just like to keep that in the loop, the traffic is something else. As much as some people have said that they wouldn't like to see restaurants and that type of stuff up in the area, I think it would be a good idea. When Burger King closed down, it shifted everything over, it's hard to get a fast food place or whatever up there, you have to go all the way to the other end of town. I think that for the employers up there in that area, that might be something that could be a draw, that they have local restaurants that are available. And I think it would be a good idea with some oversight, you know, so it's not, you know, inundated. But that was, those are my concerns. I'd like to, you know, I'll, I'll keep in touch as we go through this. But I think it's a wonderful idea, I think it's a good thing for Greenfield, but I think we need to look at the neighbors and take that into consideration. I know that the traffic was a big deal when we were talking about removing the overlay district, and I think that's still something that needs to be concerned. Thank you.
Yes?
I'm not a proponent, but I've been following this since the day he started, you know, speaking of the, my name's Dawn Moran, I'm from, I'm from Hope Street in Greenfield.
Okay, what was your name again?
Dawn Moran. I just want, when you guys consider or vote, I just want you to not dismiss what the taxpayers were told in exchange for the library vote, because there were some that felt, okay, that eases the pain of the, the expensive library we're building on us, the burden on us taxpayers. And then to turn around and find out that the, the little bit of relief we saw we were going to get by developing some of the restaurants and, you know, all of a sudden now we're finding out that's being pulled. We were lied enough about the library and promised enough things, this is another thing that we were told, that the voters, oh, well, we're going to change the zoning. And a lot of people were like, okay, well, that kind of eases the pain a little bit, and now that's being pulled. So just consider what the, they were promised when there was the bribe of the library vote that swayed it over to getting us a library that we really can't afford. Thank you.
Yes?
I'm Madeline Miller, and I'm Lover's Lane in Greenfield. I haven't been to a planning board meeting in so long, I'm so excited to be here. I applaud you, Mayor Weigardner, for your long trajectory with this and for being open to this shift. I feel like one of the, I actually looked back at all my notes from 2003 or whenever that was, and the thing that we all had in common was the need for good jobs, good middle-class jobs in Greenfield, and the difference that we had was how to arrive at that goal. And I am a neighbor to the industrial park, I see you guys bursting at the seams with your parking lots. It's actually been like amazing over the last couple of months, I've just, I've noticed. And I'm not a close butter, but I feel like the light industry and the industrial park, they're good neighbors, there's not a, you know, Lover's Lane is a cut through, we can tell when there's a shift change because there's a little bit more traffic and sometimes the people are like anxious to get home from work. But I really, really appreciate this turn of focus and toward industry and manufacturing. And the last thing I'll say is I just want to also applaud the timing because I feel like we're looking at the release of a huge amount of funds federally in the Inflation Reduction Act, and if we can attract some of that green industry, or I don't want to outcompete you guys, you're already here, but if we can attract some of that to Greenfield, it would just be such a win culturally, financially, for the tax base in just every, in every way. So I'm really excited about this. I tend to feel that the space should be reserved for as much industry as we can possibly get in there, but I'm a little agnostic still about that, and I am looking forward to following the rest of these conversations. So, thank you.
And what else? Thanks, Councilor.
Hi, G. D. S. Orger, 437 Press Lane. So I'm delighted about these businesses that you're doing so well, needing to expand, that's wonderful. Great to have some more jobs here. But I do have some concerns, one of the, in the general commercial that this is now, this is allowed by special permit to manufacturing and light industry, manufacturing, and I am concerned about the things that we would be taking away. So let's see here, allowed, light industry, manufacturing, a processing plant, that zone is much less restrictive. I also want you, to make you aware that if you're changing to planned industrial, we added a couple of years ago, because there's also an enormous housing shortage here, we added to the general commercial, district, two-family dwelling, three-family dwelling, mixed residential businesses, and I would love for that, for any of you businesses to expand there, I don't see why we can't have that all together. And I think that any change that you're making, what we've sort of seen before was something that's on the docket later for you to just talk about, that sometimes things have unintended consequences. And I just wanted to point out, I would certainly think you would be giving a special permit to a wonderful business that's been here, if that were the business, or if it's some other business that wanted to extend here, I'm sure you could find a way to do the special permit to a while then. But there would be things that you would be losing, restaurants that somebody talked about having nearby to these, I, I've seen that as a problem, I used to be on the planning board. I've seen that as a problem or a concern that was brought up because that is a use that's not allowed in the, you know, in the planned industrial. So to have a little place to eat next door to the planned industry, and I think Mayor Weigardner was talking about that by, about, about the importance of having restaurants nearby. I would rather add things or even add terminology to a district than to lose some of the things that we would have. So that's my take on that. Thank you.
Any else? Okay, well, feel free to raise your hand if you're playing along the way if you, if it's mayor.
Well, I need to interrupt you.
No, that's okay, I was, I was just rambling.
I just, I, I can partially address one of your concerns, if I may?
Yes.
Because I, I still remember all those discussions, all those years ago. And one of the issues that I would see, oh, on the curb, on the cut off of Route 2, and who knows, I, I deal with mass DOT a lot, sometimes they're easy to work with and most of the time they're not. If it's their idea, then they're real easy. If it's not their idea, then it gets a little more complicated. But what I recall along there is that is also wetland, so we, you know, you're not, it's Greenfield, you're not going to escape wetlands in many places. But, but that is, what's good about this particular property, as I recall, any of it really along there, is, is that wetlands is confined to, you know, the, that, what would it be, sort of the northwest edge of, of this property.
Yes.
But, but it would be something that would have to be factored into it. I don't know that it's impossible, but it, it just would factor into it.
Believe me, I understand about the wetlands.
Yeah.
I have it on three sides.
Yeah, I was just going to say, where you are, you probably do experience it. The other thing is, with regard to traffic, whatever, I mean, they don't, if, if you're, if you're writing a piece of, of actually the zoning ordinance, you don't specify, you know, no traffic this that, or no traffic that that, or no traffic here. That's all part of what happens when you, when you have an actual person who wants to develop a company or whatever entity that wants to develop the property, and then you factor in based on its use what, what the traffic is. And there's always, there's always with major developments in particular, bigger sized developments, a, a traffic study required. I don't think that the, the planning board would, should not require a traffic study done and then be able to mitigate. What I think of, when I think of changing this from, say, an, an area called general commercial where it would invite a lot of retail or a large retail entity, which I'm not sure would happen anymore, you know, things have changed in the last few years, certainly in this area. But is, what you're talking about is shifts, as, as Madeline said, she knows when there's a shift change, and I'm sure you do too. And then... And then, of course, there are the, you know, you have to receive supplies. You have to send supplies out or your product out. So, but you're not talking about the constant in and out, in and out, in and out that you would be if you let this as general commercial and allow a lot more intense retail development there. That's, that's just a comment about how it would play. And I would just leave you with this thought that one of the things that I, I experience and M.J. experiences when we sit down and we talk together about, all right, we need to figure out a marketing plan for bringing business to Greenfield. I can't do it if I don't have something to sell them, as in market to them. So that's one of the other motivations for expanding industrial property in Greenfield. Because we, I know of at least two other businesses who have wanted to come to Greenfield and just not been able to quite find the right piece of property to build on. And they've ended up going to Deerfield. And I'm kind of tired of giving Deerfield. You know, people from Deerfield, Greenfield can work in Deerfield. I don't get the Deerfield taxes. So I'm kind of tired of that. So I'd like to see us change that dynamic.
I think the board can feel free to weigh in here and ask questions or comment back and forth at this point here. I think, I'm just going to weave our discussion into this, as a discussion, into this overall conversation we have because it's great to have them there, here, and also members of the public to participate. I'm just wondering about the, what, what you see, Mayor Weigardner, about the advantage of creating this as a distinct, you know, planned industry zone versus allowing some of those planned industry uses by special permit in general commercial? What the, I'm just curious, the advantage of it is? Or anything?
Yeah, I mean, you could do that. You certainly could. I feel like the advantages are, they're strictly perhaps from, is that my head? I don't know. I'm trying to get the camera off. There we go. So the, the advantage I think probably is more in a, in a marketing sense. I could make, I could target a sector, advanced manufacturing, light industry, and be able to say, you know, look, we now have in Greenfield 48 acres that could potentially hold your particular business. So does that change that much? If we perhaps make it easier for light industry and advanced manufacturers, and we should really point in the same anyways, to make it easier for them to locate there? Yes. I do know that a particular retail store or corporation has been holding us hostage now for many, many years. And that is Stop &amp; Shop Corporation, not the store in Greenfield, of course. Wonderful grocery store, which I use a lot, I'm in that neighborhood. But they themselves have been holding us hostage by leasing the property that the, that the, it was going to be the big box that Saruzi invested, owned, Saruzi investors owned. And they will continue to lease that property for the next 13 years and go with an amount of money. And it's strictly to keep competition out of that, that area that is zoned for retail. So I'm not, that's not me saying, so that's why I don't want retail. Everything, obviously, I do. I propose selected types of retail in the zone. So maybe there's a way to just look at the general commercial and revise it. But I would like to think that we would make a commitment, as some people have said here, to bringing in all kinds of jobs. But at the same time, I think Counselor Disorder also makes a good point. Sometimes an excuse is also useful when you have a limited amount of land. So I, like I said, I'm not leaning one particular way or the other, but I do want us to be able, in Greenfield, to make a full-froated plea, sales pitch, whatever you want to call it, to small manufacturers, light industry. And we can't do it right now. We just don't have enough space. It's all specific with the back.
George?
Yeah, first of all, I wanted to suggest that we, of course, we don't have our nameplates. So I wonder if we should announce, for members of the public.
Oh, sure. That's a new system.
Yeah, exactly.
Your name and address, please.
I'm George Colomses of the Planning Board Ice Chair. And I have a series of comments and reflections. And I'm happy to do them one at a time to the microphone.
Well, yeah, I'm sure.
So I think, I know we've had a discussion here at a previous meeting about planned industry versus general industry. And I hadn't heard until tonight when the mayor was talking about the other potential industry created. So I really feel like planned industry is the way to go in this regard. And I think, as compared to Counselor Disorder, I'm the same. I think it's a real commitment. It demonstrates a real public commitment of this community to that kind of development. And I also want to point out that the other side, French King Highway, would remain general commercial. So, you know, personally, we're concerned about the option of adding restaurants or other development like that. That wouldn't change. That would stay general commercial. And I also was noticing that in planned industry, of the uses that are permitted by rights, one of them, number 16, is cafeterias for employees, ATMs, automated vending kiosks, daycare centers, and other accessory uses to a non-residential use. So there could be some things within the planned industry though that might serve as some of the employees there, for example. So that's all in the regulations for planned industry. And I wanted to comment about the traffic issues that a couple of people spoke of as well. I know that with Miller, comment on the, it sounded like not just the number of cars, but the speed of cars when they're going at the championship. And I'm guessing, Mr. Tweed, that the issue wouldn't be just the volume of the traffic, but the speed of the traffic, that was a current concern for your area. I don't know, guessing about that. And I just wanted to say that in the master plan, which is a planning board document, obviously, of the economic development chapter, there's a real commitment of the community to work on kinds of development, like we're talking about tonight. But there's also in the transportation chapter, it's a very strong commitment to reducing the neighborhood impact of traffic on neighborhood. So I just wanted to apply that. And I don't know, as the mayor was saying, when your projects come up, we get reviewed from a point of view of traffic impact and that kind of thing. But I just wanted to say that's, those are two equal commitments that the community has made. And there are various ways to address the traffic impacts. So I just want to, I want to thank those of mine. Thoughts, more? Thank you.
Well, I also, I also think in that vein, true to the traffic, George, that the potential sort of traffic congestion on full build-out of a planned, this zone is planned industry would be far less than a full build-out of general commercial. So I think that, you know, it's compatible with what you're saying. Is that, and then the mayor mentioned earlier, is that the traffic issue is going to be very different?
I'm not sure who, to whom I should address this, perhaps the mayor. I've heard several references tonight and earlier about a deal or exchange agreements when the library was up for grabs. And I've heard about it, and I just wonder if anyone in the room who could elaborate on that. I lived in the area, but I've heard about it, but I don't understand it.
I think George and I can talk about that a little bit. Okay. So the grand compromise for the library asked for some zoning changes. One was a reduction or an increase in some of the thresholds for major developmental review. So it increased the number of car trips, for instance, that would trigger a major developmental review, as well as the square footage of proposed buildings within major developmental review. It changed, it brought the special permit review for major developmental review to the ZVA as opposed to the planning board. And that was another, another compromise that was made. And it rolled back the French King, Carter, overlay district. It didn't really address the underlying zoning, as I believe, of the general commercial.
That doesn't change the uses or any of that.
Right. So, so the zoning, the zoning compromise in terms of the mapping really had to do with the overlay district. It didn't have anything to do with the zoning that was allowed in that area.
And the impact of removing the overlay district was making it easier to have some of the developers more controlled.
Because that was, because that, because those uses weren't allowed in the overlay district?
Too bad.
Thank you.
Did you, did you mention gas stations and drive-throughs?
I didn't say drive-throughs.
Because that was part of the overall grant.
Yeah, so I guess that, I guess that those became allowed when the, when the overlay district was rolled back? Is that, is that what brought that into? Yeah, so that's, so we didn't, it's not as though we said, it's not as though we changed the underlying zoning to allow gas stations and fast food restaurants. It was by, because of rolling back the overlay district, those uses would be allowed within that zone, correct?
Those were not permitted, is it?
What, in the overlay?
Gas stations were not permitted, drive-through restaurants were not permitted. So that language was changed. That's not just rolling back the district, but it's also changing the layout. The overlay zone was destroyed. I mean, it wasn't rolled back, is it?
Well, so, but were those, were those uses added to general commercial?
Yeah, the language was changed from, the sentence that said, "Gas stations shall not be permitted", that sentence was deleted. It was taken out. So the changes were made, and of course, nothing, nothing has happened since then. No gas stations and no more drive-through restaurants have appeared there. But that's because of market changes. But we were flooded with gas stations, no fun. But there was, there was a language change because of the, not just because of the rollback, but the language that was in that underlying district was changed as well.
So to add that the, to the, that shift of allowing certain things in the general commercial, commercial area there, with the removal of the overlay would continue for the other side of French King Highway, because that remains in general.
And further down, on the same side, but, you know, just, well, where the, the, whatever you call it.
Shed.
Sheds, yeah, that from there on out would be general commercial.
Right.
Yeah, okay.
South.
So it's a, it's a very minimal, I think, stepping back from that original idea of the compromise because we're still allowing those uses in that zone. We're not changing the overlay district. We're not changing the MDR. We're not changing the special permit granting authority. We're just taking a section of that area and zoning it to, and considering zoning it to planned industry. So I don't, I don't, I don't see it as a breach of trust on the library compromise anyway.
Could I speak to that?
Sure.
There seems to be, like, if I understand, the idea that there was some compromise that it would allow to be expanded as retail, which would pay more taxes to the town. The one way that's not going to happen is leaving it the way that it is. Stop &amp; Shop leases it for $1.3 million a year for the next 13 years. If you leave it the way it is, they're going to re-up that lease. The net present value of that lease is $13 million. But they don't pay taxes on $13 million. They pay taxes, I think, on $700,000 in valuation on that property. If we get it, or SWM or someone else gets it, it's going to be worth $15 million on the town's books. And we're going to pay taxes on all of that, as we do now. The way to get more tax money to the town and pay for the library and anything else is to zone that industrial. You leave it the way it is, you're getting no money.
Counselor?
Do we have something that, is there something that we know? That there, have they promised that they were going to give up their lease if we changed the zoning? No?
No, nobody's even spoken to them. Mr. Capshaw asked us if he was going to purchase that property.
They're in a rock-solid lease. They have to pay it off.
So they, but have they said, do you have something, have they said to us, like, they're going to change, they're going to give up the lease if the zoning's changed?
They can't give up the lease. They're helping, they're helping pay the lease.
Okay, so in 13 years?
Yeah, they have a lease with Saruzi.
Right.
So Saruzi's not going to give up a lease on 13 million bucks. But essentially, it would be worthless to Stop &amp; Shop to be interested in reopening that lease in the year 2035.
They don't know, they don't even know that there's even a plan to squeeze on the property. That they're, they have not been part of that conversation at all. They just have been part of a conversation with Mr. Saruzi, I mean, with Mr. Capshaw.
I think Nathaniel Hussey, Planning Board member, 114 Burke Street. I think I'm getting to where your question might be coming from. If the zoning is changed, you can't have a supermarket in planned industrial. So they want to continue a lease with Saruzi, great. But they couldn't build, no one could build a supermarket there if they wanted to. Because it's planned industrial. So that, that lease is effectively irrelevant.
Well, no, because there's no incentive for Saruzi to break it because they're getting a million, $1.3 million a year for just owning the property. So, so the conversation has to be, what's the incentive for Saruzi to break the lease?
So Saruzi, the gentleman died. His lawyer's interested in dumping all their properties. So a company like us could make them an offer that would take a hair, that, where Stop &amp; Shop would get a haircut on their lease and save a little bit of money. There would be no competition. Saruzi could cash in early. A family trust could cash in early. Everybody wins.
So that's like, like an early buyout of the lease, for instance?
That's right.
Make it 50 cents on the dollar, pick a number, whatever.
Probably wouldn't, but yeah.
Have that discussion happened? Were you talking to Stop &amp; Shop?
Yeah.
No, not Stop &amp; Shop.
We've talked to Stop &amp; Shop. We've talked to Saruzi. Other companies have as well.
Right, and so one thought is that, is that changing this to planned industry reduces that value of the land for the lease and potentially helps jumpstart the conversation about, about the lease. Anybody from, for George?
I just, I just wanted to ask me if you could comment on the letter that was shared with the board from the president, the president of the project.
I have to admit, it's been a very busy two days for me. I know it's in my email. I have not read it. If you want to give me a synopsis of it, I can make, I'm not avoiding it. It's just, it's hidden above, behind a few others.
I had a brief conversation.
I will respond to those.
I had a brief conversation with Eric about it. And there is one, I think, 10-acre piece of property on the northern edge.
It's all about the city, and I don't know that there was, I certainly didn't have anything to do with that. I've been to Martin at the time, but I thought there was some, I don't know that there's actual paperwork that says we would never develop that. I know that Saruzi wasn't interested in developing it. They were fine if that was cut off of their, their piece. And then it just left and they had to buy.
The essence of it, as I, I've got it, is that with something happening in that general area, they want to flag that having this special area, that having the grievance and seeking guarantee will respect our efforts of the community. seeking guarantee, we'll respect our efforts to mitigate protect, sure, people with names involved in these boroughs, the White Ash, and so on.
Yeah, and I don't believe that that would be something that, I mean, I, I don't know what the agreement was, I'd have to look it up, I'm sure it's in our file somewhere, and I would be more than happy to talk to them about it, because I, I don't know that, I don't believe that that is in part of that cross-act area at all, if I recall, I think I recall asking Eric, does that, does this include that 10-acre site?
I asked, I asked Eric to just create a map showing what, what, what the parcel was, that was in the zone, potentially, potentially changing it. He also was going to invite, what's his name?
David, is it?
David Grul.
Yeah, he was going to invite David in, just to have, have a conversation with Eric about this.
I'm not sure about the proposed map that Eric created, if it includes this.
Yeah, I'm not 100% either, but I, I think I just remember reminding him to come up with a sugar presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, that, that land, that piece of the northern tip is the White Ash Schmoll, and at one point, the Saruzi Company had told the Nolan Beaker that we will give you that land. It's not developable, I mean, the state will not let you do it, it's a swamp, it's a wetland. You cannot, and Saruzi, the Saruzi folks, Greenfield Industries, never said that they were going to develop that land.
That's right.
It was of no use to them. So I don't think, I think whatever, whatever is rezoned PI, you're still not going to be able to use that northern piece of land, which is why I used the figure of 10 acres, and for no other reason than the state will not allow us to, to use, to convert a wet land, even with, I mean, replication wouldn't even be an issue, because it's just, it's, it's not even a wetland, it's a swamp. So, I, I, I think Nolan Beaker should get the project, should get that property, just like, you know, the property eventually was given to, they bought the property on the other side, on the eastern side of Route 2A, but they have a good point, and have, have had a good point, is that representations were made to them, that this would be deeded to us by Saruzi, and that, that was never, I don't know if they, I don't think they ever got anything in writing, they just had a, a promise from the developer that, that they would, they would use it to get support from the Native Americans and not oppose the project, and then they, they never made it happen.
I was just, I think it's important to get everybody sort of in the room, having a conversation about this, just to understand, but, 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 clarifications of this, or this.
And remind me, what is the zoning of the Nolan Beaker property?
Right now, it's in general commercial.
Yeah, I think it is, it's still zoning, whatever the underlying zoning is, it's just that.
I thought it was something different.
I'm looking at a map, it's general industrial across that.
GI or GC?
GI.
That's what I thought, I was surprised, I remember it was different from the, the other.
Either way, it's not, it's not advantageous to develop it, you know, we could certainly have discussions about that.
I was surprised.
Add when the time comes.
Thank you.
All right, and do you have any questions for the, for the mayors?
Okay, well, thank you so much. Thanks either to all of you who are interested. More conversation will be had.
Yeah.
Just before we end this evening, or put it up. I don't necessarily know if I would like to.
I would, I would, I'd like a little time to sit.
Yeah, no, you don't have to make a motion.
Okay, so that would be my, just, that's two cents.
Yeah, just, just, so, remember the public note was called on our agenda for, for discussion and deliberation, that just allowed us an option to move forward with the action of initiating this, if we felt ready to do it, but we're not obliged to.
Right, right, and I think we've had enough, enough input from, from citizens, and, and we have enough information from the mayor that I think we might want to just consider this individually, and then as a group again, next time we need.
I would like to, and I appreciate you following up with the Nolan Beaker folks, and I, I'm curious about that, the zoning of the property they have, and how that, what would make sense for that 10 acres from the point of view, as we're considering this.
Yeah, well, I mean, if it, it might, if it's, it sounds like it's not developable, it's all wet ones, anyway, and so, I'd give up the question for the town, is it town-owned land now, or Saruzi-owned land? You know, is that, does Saruzi own that property, or, or the town own it at this point?
I don't know where it stands at this point, it was not, it was not, this is under Mayor Martin, it's not clear, I, I think, I think the mayor has told you tonight it's town land. I think that's where it stands. They, they, the Nolan Beaker expected it to be deeded to the, the Nolan Beaker project with Centinawa, whatever, when, when the land deal was closed with Saruzi, and, you know, during that, there was a, there was nine years in court, and during that whole period, they, they kept pushing for it to be deeded to them, and Mayor Martin was not willing to do that, and clearly, this administration is saying they haven't done it either, so they're saying it belongs to the, the town.
Okay, well, I think it's good, it's good, good thing to have this part of our, have a, a conversation, and it hurt this whole initiative, it's just putting, tying that up, tying up that loose end. Okay, so, should we move on? Your next agenda, Eric?
Yes.
Thank you, everybody, you're free to, to remain and watch the show.
And Charles, I appreciate you inviting the public, I mean, it's not a public hearing up here, so, that's why I appreciate your discretion of including public input.
Oh, yeah, well, that was, yeah, I think that was super important, and, and, and when it becomes initiated, there will be a public hearing with the Economic Development Committee, and, and, you know, and our public input will be accepted at that time as well, so. Okay, next is the approval required for land endorsement off Park Avenue Assessor's Tax Map 2 Lot 32, submitted by Paul Bissetz. It's like they're getting a piece of property, getting some property to bring their existing garage within the, within the, the boundaries of the property they own.
So, the existing garage is now, is it on their property home?
Right, right.
Okay.
It looks like it's owned by the railroad, and somehow they got through to the railroad and got the railroad to sell this piece of land, which is amazing.
Okay. Thank you for, for.
So, do we have a motion on this? Any questions?
I'll make a motion to endorse the A&amp;R.
Second, yeah, you seconded, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose.
I'll make my usual, oh, that's right.
Yes, okay.
All have motioned to have the chair assign the A&amp;R behalf of court.
Second. Discussion, all in favor? Aye. Next is our ZBA recommendation, application of Jane B. Moss and Marque Parranci for, I, I.
Perranci.
Perranci, thank you, for property located in 15 Cook Street, Assessor's Tax Map 1A Lot 35, which is located within the RA zoning district for a special permit pursuant to Section 206.2E, 208.3, the zoning ordinance, in order to allow the installation of a five-foot-high block of aluminum fence within the front yard setback along Moshburn Avenue, and for the first 12, 15 feet in from Moshburn Avenue, along the property line of 82 Silver Street at this location. You can see patiently and waiting for your, your, your opportunity, do you want to talk about your, your?
Sure, Jane Moss, it was in Kirk Street. At the end of June, we adopted her rescue pup, she was two years old, from Oklahoma, and she's been nothing but joy, and she gets us out walking the neighborhood, and it's been beautiful summer, but looking forward to the next, you know, eight, 10 years with her. We learned that it might be great to have our backyard fenced in. We are on a corner, however, so our side yard, we consider side yard, is actually frontage, and the maximum height for a fence on frontage is four feet. Measuring her, and the recommended height of a fence for her, is five feet. So we're compromising with L&amp;L Fence Company for a four-and-a-half foot fence. It's not to leave her out, to use the fenced-in area as babysitter, it's to allow us to be outside with her, but not on leash. So, learning all about the special permit process, by the way, Eric has been fantastic throughout the process, once, thank you. So here we are, so this is the first meeting that I'm attending, because Havi is home with the copper, so let me know what we're doing and why. At the next meeting, assuming it goes forward with the recommendation, there are pictures and a graph, I have a copy of my high picture, if you're interested tonight.
I was able to, as it goes, able to actually see it pretty, pretty clearly on the Google Earth Street View, which is an amazing resource nowadays, we have it at our disposal. So you want to build, you want to build a fence through the three inches of your property line?
Right, we would like to use this essentially all of our backyard. We have a great relationship with our two neighbors, the one backing up on Silver Street, the one next to us on Cook Street, so it's going to be about round numbers, 70 by 50 feet, linear feet of fencing, so it is large enough for us to toss the ball, have other people bring their puppies or dogs over. So it's going to be, yeah, it's pretty much most of our side yard.
Do you have a question?
Yes, I'm, I'm looking at a schematic here, which says the area to be fenced in is a rectangle.
Yes.
Sorry, we're so far away.
Yes, no, it's okay.
Which says that you're 30 feet in from the side, 30 inches in, I think, from the sidewalk.
Right, that's the zoning, the zoning requirement is 30 inches in from the sidewalk.
Right, and then, but it doesn't, doesn't show me what the distance is to the other end of the property, which would be what, the west end, I think, so from the road, from Moshburn, to the back of your property, it's about how far?
The width of the lot is 135 by 88, so it's 88 on Cook Street, 88 feet, and then it's 135 feet from our property to the back of the property on Silver. We're fencing in acrosswise from Moshburn, 30 inches in, to maybe, I'm guessing, and I didn't map it out, about 70 feet, so it's not going to be right next to on next-door neighbor's property, it's going to be in a 15 and 15.
Right, and, are you clear on the property lines?
We actually spent $1,000 and had a professional survey.
You did, okay.
Yes, by Daniel Salves in Sunderland, because we wanted to be sure that this investment was not going to come back and bite us.
Yeah.
Literally.
Good thinking.
Oh, absolutely, and actually Eric did ask for a copy of that survey, so I looked it back to him.
Just one foot from your neighbor at 82 Silver.
Yes.
And the, the tree is right in the middle of this, is that correct?
Yes, it is.
Yeah.
Yeah, actually, there was a stand of hemlocks on the, on our back line between our property and the property on Silver Street, and we've had a great relationship with those neighbors, and we shared the cost of actually taking all those trees down. They were beginning to fail, and she was having some drainage issues, and nobody wants a tree falling in the garage. So that land is now beautiful and open, and there was never, when we first got our dog, it was like, this is great, we'll never fence the yard, and then a month into having our puppies, like, you know what, yeah, this would be fantastic. So, we've had nice conversations with our neighbor, they're very supportive. And not here tonight to say they're not.
Yeah, I mean, with the, this being a special permit, they would have the option of speaking to the ZBA, of course, so that's always a nice safeguard, and, and, it's nice to play nice things, but I instructed the, between those two yards, it's a nice continuous flow, you couldn't almost tell where.
Snow and sun loves it, because they do both our properties, and it just, yes, well, they're not going to be able to do that.
But now they've got to wheat whack around the fence.
And that was, too, I mean, I think the, the type of fence you're doing is, it's very, it looks very attractive, but it's also.
It's a really nice one, yeah, initially, I thought, okay, we're going to have to put up one of those vinyl fences that I see everywhere, and then I went down to L&amp;L Fence, and, no we don't. It looks like wrought iron, it's beautiful, it's simple.
No, it's great, it's much, much nicer than those white vinyl fences, it allows transparency, and it's.
Yeah, actually, at any point where you stand, it's, yeah, you're not blocking any view, and it's still gives us a sense of expansiveness, we still get to see our neighbors walking back and forth.
Are you going to do any sort of planting in that little 30-inch strip between the fence and the sidewalk?
Not between the fence and the sidewalk, I think the reason is we want to keep that mobile, but what we're planning on doing is, I have a Japanese maple that I moved, and now it's too big for the spot that it's in, we're going to use a little bit of landscaping inside the fenced-in area to soften it a little bit. But not a lot, because honestly, I don't want more gardens to take care of.
I would, I would make a motion to forward a pause of recommendation to the ZBA.
A second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you, some recommendations, thank you, consider this sort of your dress rehearsal. Thank you. Next on the agenda, a discussion I had over potential amendment to the zoning ordinance regarding outdoor marijuana cultivation facilities. Other members of the public, you have thoughts on this, or that they want to share with us this time? Counselor?
Hi, ladies and gentlemen, so, I had a couple of things to say, because marijuana is taking off here in Greenfield. We're kind of learning about some of the zoning challenges and problems that are accompanying these businesses. A few of us here, actually, some of us are here tonight, were at a very well-attended, cancelled community host agreement meeting with a marijuana cultivator at the end of Backy Hollow Lane, and. Okay, so there was a, a, a scheduled meeting with a, with a, for a community host agreement on Backy Hollow Lane, it was, said it was cancelled, but the developer asked me to be there in case anyone showed up, and there were a street full of people, 10 people at least that were there, and umbrellas listening to our proposal. Interestingly, this land was referred to tonight, as they were talking about the industrial park, it's land on Backy Hollow that abuts the end of.
Greenfield Street.
Greenfield Street, Greenfield Street, and there was a big fight over it in 1981, and so that the town would, or, maybe not a fight, there was a large argument about it, so that the land would not be taken by eminent domain, it was farmland, Green, because they put it into APR, and, so, I think that's 27 acres, there's another, maybe quarter of an acre or half an acre that's in the RC zone, and the developer was proposing, as you know, in the Planned Industrial, only indoor grow is allowed. The developer was proposing sort of outdoor, indoor, indoor, outdoor grow, that would be in hoop houses, and he kept referring to it as indoor and outdoor. in hoop houses, and he kept referring to it as indoor and outdoor. So there was, we could see from that meeting that more definition was needed for what was indoor grow and what was outdoor grow. It's kind of a complicated story, but the park does not allow indoor cultivation, I mean, does not allow outdoor cultivation. But the Massachusetts Department of Agriculture does say that land in the APR could be developed, they just made a, say a ruling on that, that you could develop agriculture on your APR land as long as it wasn't federally owned. So it does appear that some clarification needs to be done on what's indoor grow and what's outdoor grow. Would you look at one of the other? That's the reason that I looked at forty different ordinances, put together a little proposal with the help of others on some defining indoor and outdoor grow. We've also had some problems in the RC. And I just, in what I wrote, added some language for increasing the distance between an outdoor grow and the nearest property line. So I just wanted to give you a little background history on that, and maybe somebody else might speak a little bit to more of the issues that were there. Just wanted to give you a little history on what happened.
Excuse me, Counselor Disorder. I didn't, the last point you were making about language, about setbacks.
So I put a policy something, added quite a few, well, quite a few things, and added some more definition. It also defines the distances between outdoor grows, because the odor from outdoor grows was one of the issues with outdoor grows that we really were not aware of when we first proposed a zoning change. We also added, I also put in a little, some language concerning what use, so that the DPW was actually weighing in on whether or not our resources were being tapped too much by the outdoor grows. So I sent to Charles, I'm assuming that, I'm assuming that Charles and.
I didn't, I didn't foregive you, I'm sorry.
Okay.
So that's why.
So I'm talking to, I'm talking to probably Blake Green, and I didn't realize, I thought you probably had a zoning change.
No, no, I just wanted to clarify. I didn't go, because we've obviously had some parallel processes going on, where the planning board was proposing some, or working on some things, and the council initiated some, you know, changes. So I was just trying to clarify, was this input you had shared with the planning board, or is this something you were initiating at the council?
I sent it to, I will be, I will be proposing it at the council level, but I thought, actually, we're, I saw it on your agenda, I sent it to both Charles and to Eric, assuming that the whole board would have received it. And it was in an effort to save you a little trouble, because I went to a lot of trouble to write it. But maybe Charles can make sure that that gets all of me now. I have one copy, if you want to look at it.
No, that's okay, thank you. I just want to clarify the process, because this is, it is, you might have noticed, a running item, because we're trying to take some time to consider a lot of factors, to make a proposal or something.
Yes.
It sounds like it's a bit of a moving target, that the council is initiating, so, you know, and that's, but I'm just trying to understand.
Well, yeah, so was what you, was what you said a draft of an ordinance that the city council is considering putting forward?
I chair's meeting is not until next Tuesday, but I put it on the chair's agenda, so I think it will be considered. And I just would hope that you would, I mean, I, of course, always welcome input from everyone. That's why I was trying to share that with you, to give you a little heads up on, on some things that abutters, myself as a councilor, other cities, had looked at, and I thought, well, let me give this information to you where it was on your agenda. And I could see one major problem that we had as we were at that community host agreement was, we definitely need a definition of what indoor grow is and what outdoor grow is.
Yeah, I'm looking at the definitions, is there something in here?
No, and so I clearly, you know, put together the language so that indoor grow would be inside the building, such as.
Yeah, I've read the language the council is proposing. It's what she says, it's clear what outdoor grow is, and it's clear what an indoor grow is. You can go up to Bernison and see the Heritage operation there, they're growing thirty, thirty thousand square feet indoors. And it, and it's very hard to smell. I didn't smell anything when I visited it. The, if you do it in hoop houses, it's very hard to control the smell. Someone suggested that you might be able, they blow wind through a hoop house, they blow air through it, and you might be able to put some kind of odor reduction apparatus on the end of it, but I've never seen it done. It's interesting that the one hundred thousand square foot Tier XI grow in Greenfield, you can't get all the way to it because it's marked off, but from a distance you can see, they've put up fencing around what looks like a hundred thousand square feet, and that's a big, it's a big area, it's worth looking at. And then they put up three or four hoop houses. That apparently is where they're doing the grow. So I don't know whether they're calling that indoor or outdoor, but that's right. That is the issue that's being raised by this proposed grow in this industrial, you know, in this, in this twenty-seven acres next to the industrial park. One thing I don't understand, and maybe someone here can answer, how can you, how can it be zoned, planned, industrial, and yet agriculture, protected for agriculture, APR? How does that work? The, Philip, the, the APR designation was granted in nineteen ninety-seven, so it's one of those grandfather things. The P, the plant industrial zone is there, but that land, which was, belonged at one point to Jake Gigness, actually James, his son too. The town at one point tried to take that property by eminent domain and make it part of the industrial park. The landowner objected to that and gave it to the state without any compensation. It has an APR that predates anything that happened with the industrial zone, back in ninety-seven. So it's, yes, it is in a PI zone, but it's, it's, what would you call it, a non-conforming use? Pre-existing non-conforming use. So it's got, it's got the APR designation, which, as Counselor Disorder mentioned, is a kind of a contrast, contradiction, because the Mass Department of Agriculture says, oh yeah, you can, you can grow marijuana on there, and the CCC says, no, you can't, because it's not an agricultural crop, it's a commercial crop. The Cannabis Control Commission does not consider marijuana to be an agricultural product because of its vast commercial value. So it's, it's a commercial product to them. But the MDAR has said, because of the lack of definition between indoor and outdoor, they've decided that they would just let it, let it be up to the, I'm sorry, it's the definition between agriculture and non-agriculture, indoor, outdoors, and others, but they, the MDAR decided in their discretion that they would tell APR people, if you have agricultural preservation restriction, you can grow marijuana there, but they know that it's a, it's an unclear area about, you know, how this is, if, would ever come if there was a litigation over it. In the meantime, the project that Counselor Disorder is mentioning at Factory Hollow did raise a very clear problem, where you have someone coming to Greenfield saying, I'm, I'm going to, I'm in a PI zone, so I have to make it indoor, because I can't make it outdoor, because it's not an RC zone. So I'm telling you, it's indoor. So we said, a hoop house to you is indoor? And he said, well, it's got air, fresh air blowing through it. And I said, well, when you take the product from that grow and give it to the inspectors at CCC, don't you think they're going to call it outdoor, an outdoor product, and not an indoor? Because there's a very big difference in terms of how they grade it, in terms of price, because indoor is very premium, outdoor is not. Outdoor is worth about half. So he, the gentleman who was representing the farmer from Hadley, he said, yeah, we're assuming it'll be considered an outdoor grow. But then, but then I said, well, but it's in, but it's in, you're saying it's indoors, but now you're saying it's outdoors. He said, I know. It doesn't make any sense. And the end result is, that's, that's why we reviewed the council's definition of an indoor and outdoor, and think it would be very helpful. When the council is done, I want to tell you one other thing about communication we have from CCC that I can share with you, that I think would be helpful. But I don't want to interrupt the council's presentation.
I just, I have a question about, what is, what does the Cannabis Control Commission say about hoop houses, whether they're indoor versus outdoor? Because they're regulating price, they don't have an opinion about what a hoop house is.
Well, let me, let me, let me put it this way. We, we, meaning Al Collins and Doug Stotts and I, wrote a letter to the CCC, and let me just share this with you, and I'll give you the written stuff, because I have it on my phone, but I'll pass it on to the chair, and you can share it with members. We, we wrote to, we wrote to the CCC, to a woman named Carrie Lewis, who's an investigator. She's based out of Worcester. And, and Alan wrote to her, Al Collins wrote to her on August twenty-third. The subject was definition of acceptable indoor cultivation structure. And he wrote, good morning, I'm hoping that you will be able to help me with these questions I have for you. What actually constitutes an indoor grow, and is the explanation listed in the CMR five thirty-five regs? We have a cultivation agent who's saying that he will be using the, quote, "traditional hoop houses with auxiliary lighting," and inferring that this would be an indoor grow. I need some clarification on these matters, and if the answers could be backed up with reference to the CCC written regs. Whether a grow is in a greenhouse, hoop house, or other outdoors, are all these methods looked at the same way as to the necessary security fencing, video monitoring, odor noise, wastewater, air quality, for workers, and light emissions, just to name a few. The community outreach meet and greet will be coming up and so forth. Anyway, so the, the woman from, the investigator wrote back an answer about, that their concern was, she wrote, "Thank you very much for your inquiry regarding indoor/outdoor greenhouses. Pursuant to our regulatory definition of outdoor cultivation, it's defined as the cultivation of mature cannabis without the use of artificial lighting in the canopy at any point in time. Artificial lighting is permissible only to maintain immature or vegetated mother plants. Therefore, if your client is proposing the use of artificial lighting, the structures are no longer considered an outdoor cultivation. However, outdoor cultivation may use supplemental lighting to assist them in the germination, propagation of immature plants." So then, so we thought that was a strange answer. So then, I'll be done in a second. Then Al wrote her back and said, "Investigator Lewis, if a, if a city wishes to include in its zoning ordinance a definition of an indoor marijuana cultivation, in part as," and then he wrote, quote, "An indoor marijuana cultivation shall be within a fully enclosed and secured space within a building envelope that complies with the Massachusetts Building Code and the City Building Code. A fully enclosed space shall have a complete roof, a foundation, slab, or equivalent base to which the floor is secured by bolts or similar attachments, and is secure against unauthorized entry," end quote. And then he asked her, "Does the CCC have any objection to this? Is this, is a city permitted to use such a definition?" Because we couldn't, we couldn't tell from her answer. So her answer came back, "Hello, Alan, we leave all cannabis bylaws and definitions up to each municipality. You are allowed to determine your own definitions. This definition sounds reasonable and straightforward to help facilitate your municipal bylaws." So that was our answer from the CCC, is that, if you look at their regs, they really don't address the issue of indoor/outdoor, except to talk about lighting. But here she says, as the investigator, "Do you have the ability through your zoning to come up with a definition?" So we, we reviewed Counselor Disorder's definition, made some comments, and we reviewed it, and we find those to be much more useful and helpful to the city of Greenfield, so that in fact, we're not dealing with the irreconcilable difference between somebody telling you, I'm in a PI zone, so therefore it's indoors, but when it gets, when the product actually gets to the state to grade, they will call it an outdoor grow. I mean, it just doesn't make any sense. So I'm here tonight to support the counselor's language, and for indoor/outdoor, and she also added in this language a number of other points, which I hope you'll find reasonable, dealing with things like all the security measures that are required for in nine thirty-five CMR, which, you know, goes without saying. But there's also language about some of the mandatory findings, which I think would help beef up the regulation, because as you all know on the board, it's the mandatory findings that a ZDA would make, which is really whether or not the crux of the whole decision comes into, you know, whether it's a good decision or not. And that included, I wanted to point out, Al Collins would probably lynch me if I didn't tell you, that there is, there is some language at the end about something called a water management plan. Because this is something that Al is very passionate about. He's, he's claiming that the Lighton Road project, for example, the Lighton Road grow, which has been approved at a hundred thousand, that they dug, they dug two or three wells looking for water, and came up with very little water flow. I think a gallon and a half per minute was the top. And he's worried that they're going to be, they're not going to have sufficient water to do the grow that they have, and that other plants around the, the Greenfield area, if they're, if they're trying to grow, you know, a marijuana crop and use, and use, you know, natural water that's in a well, or in, you know, from a reservoir or town water, that either, either way, we have to start taking very seriously how much water we're using for these, these cultivations. And he wants them to all be metered. But this, this water management plan that the counselor has put here says that the water management plan. Actually, I can just let you read it. There's a section on, I think, Counselor, the water management plan produced for the cultivation under section seven seventeen E demonstrates that the cultivation will not, I think you wrote, you had a different verb than we thought.
Yes, I put a different word. I put a water management plan.
Not compromise, I think, usually word compromise.
It must demonstrate that water usage at full capacity will not compromise the public water supplies of the city.
The only issue, the only issue we had was that we preferred the language of, will not have an adverse impact, just because the words adverse impact are more commonly found in zoning codes. But the long shot of it is, we endorse and support what Counselor Disorder has produced, and we will be testifying to that extent when you have your EDC hearings on whatever regs come forward. I did want to say that on behalf of Al Collins and Doug Stotts, whose mother lives in the area affected by Factory Hollow, Princey Stotts, Doug Stotts, Al and I, we have three, three more mandatory findings that I want, I will leave with you tonight, that we just asked the board to consider. One of them is that no cultivation indoor or outdoor has been designed so as not, so as not to create a nuisance to surrounding premises and to adjacent properties caused by odor emanating from the cultivation, and that no odor shall be detected by a person with an unimpaired and otherwise non-normal sense of smell at any exterior boundary line of the cultivation property, or at the property line of a joint property, use or property. And that the. And that the, that the outdoor cultivation has demonstrated that it will implement industry best management practices to eliminate any noticeable trace of marijuana odor at the perimeter. This is, this is very, this is really going to be a read to you something to grab this. So I'm not going to do that. I'm not going to continue. But just, just take a look at it. And these are things, these are things that we found in several municipal ordinances in Massachusetts and other states. And thought, yeah, we need to deal with this. So then there's a, the other, excuse me, the other one is the water management. So anyway, long and short of it is, thank you for your time. Do you think that the counselor has done a great job of putting together language? And we support it.
Thanks. Counselor Elmer.
I have a couple of comments. I definitely support this. I've heard a lot, because we've had a lot of hearings about it, about the, the water needs of cannabis, that it's a great, it'll suck up the aquifer. So I actually looked up the studies that have been done. And it certainly uses more water than cotton or soybean, well, or wheat. But it is just about, there's no statistical difference in terms of the water needs of corn and marijuana. Basically, you're talking about a cornfield in terms of water use. And then the second thing is, I thought the odor language went a little too far. It seemed to me it would be sufficient to say that, that they're required to use the best available odor control. You know, saying a designated list, a distance that you can't smell a thing, I could see marijuana operations being shut down by one complaint from 500 feet away. I'm not going to write the language here, but it just seemed a little bit overstated. Especially when you ride around here and smell lots of agricultural smells much stronger than, than what we're talking about here. I happen to like the smell of skunk weed, but I know that I'm a minority. Thank you.
Now, is this going to apply to like personal, Ryan Whitney, Greenfield, Mass? Is this going to apply to like personal people's growths too? Like with the odor? Because I've been having a problem with my marijuana plant, my neighbor, and I don't have this extensive huge piece of property. And it's just at my house. And if he can smell it, am I going to have to chop down my stuff? Or is this just for commercial?
I think this, this report's hard to guide.
It's only, yeah, only commercial scale.
I was like, you're going to have a lot, a lot of people calling in the neighborhood.
You can smell it everywhere in this town.
But can I ask, what, what do you know, Judge, what do you know about the ordinance? If the neighbor said, the odor is really offensive, I'm standing on my property line, it's really offensive, what happens from that point? Because the, one of the agents, one of the agents at Factory Hall said was, well, we would just file a complaint with your building inspector. And that would resolve it and remove like that.
I don't, I mean, do we have a mechanism for the consumer who lives next to a, what they would call a nuisance odor that happens in August or September, whatever? Is there a process for, you know, a homeowner to file a complaint with the town that there is a nuisance, whether it be noise or odor? Is there, I don't, I haven't done my research on this issue. But is there something that, some process that allows some kind of resolution or complaint for someone who feels aggrieved by that?
No, I think, they, they sort of sound like board health kinds of issues. I don't know who you would specifically petition to. I know that, and I know that like everything, you know, everything is subjective. We've had people complaining about noise, for instance, in some, in some cases. And in order to, in order to like really quantify whether or not, you know, this noise is disturbance, you have to take DB readings from a certain distance, it's certain, and, and, you know, it's, it's expensive, cumbersome process. And so it's, I sort, I sort of feel like this, this starts to fall into a similar sort of category that it's, it's hard to objectify and, and hard to measure. So I don't know what, I don't know what regulatory body you would petition to.
Look, I just raised it as a problem that I could see coming. There's some, some people say, well, this is fine for you to say you're not going to regulate odor, but I, I'm really put off by it's coming onto my property. And I can't say that, that's what the country woke up over, the people were so upset about. But when we looked into other ordinances across the country, we found examples, like the ones that I was reading to you about the fact that, that, that it should be ventilated, an indoor/outdoor shall be ventilated in such a manner that no odor from marijuana or its processing can be detected by a person, and here's an interesting language, with an unimpaired and otherwise normal sense of smell. I mean, honestly, we found this again and again and again. And I was just wondering that, right now, we have nothing really in the, in the bylaw that really does a very good job of, of defining, you know, how to deal with odors. But the, there's talk about, you know, wanting to have best, industry best practice. That's the, that's the other one we saw frequently. So we just think that something, something needs to be in the, in the ordinance that, that protects people. And Counselor Disorder has attempted to do that. You know, whether it's an overreach or not, I don't think so. But the fact is, is that this is not, this is not like growing corn. And so I'm just curious what, what, what I would do as a property owner if, if I had a problem. And I'm not sure what, I'm not sure what the answer is going to the board of health.
Yeah. I mean, it's, it's still a somewhat subjective, subjective thing. Where some people, some people might find their objection moment, other people won't. And so how do you, how do you draw that line, you know, in zoning?
Well, that's what they're saying. If you have, if, if you're a person standing on your line and you have unimpaired, you know, in terms of odor smell, and the agent that we talked to said, oh, well, you would, you would just tell the building inspector to bring in somebody who's an expert in, in odor control. And they would say, yeah, I smell it. And so if they smell it, then what? Then what do you do? You know, what recourse do they have?
Right, especially, especially if it's outdoor. I mean, the indoor cultivation, you can control and you can mitigate pretty successfully.
Yeah.
Outdoor is another issue.
But that, and I'm sorry, last comment. That's why so many of the ordinances that we found absolutely ban outdoor. Because they knew that, you know, like Pittsfield, they knew that they were getting lots of complaints from their citizens that the outdoor growths we have are, are very smelly. So places like Pittsfield and Williams, Williamstown and so forth, and a number of other communities just said, outdoor cultivation is not permitted use in any of our zones, but indoor in such and such a zone.
Yeah, I don't know that there's generic option for a complaint about an odor problem or something like that. I assume it would be, or to help, if there's something that's not, you know, an individual situation or something like that, something coming from the neighborhood. But when we have a situation like this where there's a consensus that there's a odor issue that many people find effective, then proactively building something into the ordinance, whether in the range would be, you know, finding ways to mitigate it, finding ways to enforce it and, or including ways to enforce it or total ban it if it doesn't seem that there's something that can be mitigated or enforced. And I know that's some of the research we, the planning board have been talking about doing. And now that we're getting into the odor producing season of August and September, making some of those visits we talked about to some other outdoor grow facilities in the area. But I'm interested, I appreciate, Doc, Counselor Disorder, that you would, you know, put together that and share it with us and look forward to it.
Yeah, I apologize for not forwarding it to the board ahead of time. I do think, I, I did, I did read it. And, you know, rather than sort of working in parallel, in parallel efforts, it might make sense to, to, to look pretty seriously at what you, what you drafted. It does capture a lot of the issues we've talked about. And it's on our list. And I think that once, once we review it here, I would, I would consider using that as potentially as a template for the, you know, for the ordinance without good modifications maybe that we might add. So, so thank you for that, a quick start. Yes?
My only concern about the odor is where, if we start, like the coffee roasters? If, if it's so bad for the people in that neighborhood, are we now opening the door for people to complain about the coffee roasters? And the manure that people are putting out? And, you know, any factory that works around here that's pumping out orders? It might be offensive? I mean, is, is there a way to maybe hone in?
Own space for two months.
Yeah, like, you know.
Well, it is tricky. I mean, has there anybody who's been to the?
I would have been, I would have gone up and done it. That was pretty offensive.
And, and, you know, in Hadley, at certain times of the year, it's overwhelming. And the smell of manure. And, and, you know, industrial odors waft over the, waft over the Poet's Sea Ridge into my neighborhood, you know, at certain times of the day. And I find that much more offensive than the smell of marijuana. And I don't, so I don't know how you, I don't know how you sort of corral all that stuff. I guess we do have the advantage of this is, this is a targeted, the marijuana cultivation is a targeted opportunity where we can control it. So, yes.
Just to be clear about the processes and how there are these parallel processes. Because I just heard you saying, Charles, you'd be interested in incorporating or, you know, including Counselor Disorders thoughts and recommendations into our discussion of what we might propose. But I sensed that you were proposing this, and this may come to fruition in front of the council quite soon.
Yes, it should be on the next chair's agenda. I'm sorry, on yours, and that appeared courteous to, to share with you instead of duplicating efforts. But, you know, certainly, I, you know, always defer to what, you know, your wisdom. But we will be bringing it forward at, at chairs. And, but I saw it on, and I thought, why not share what, you know, what had been done thus far? So it will come this month, I think.
Yeah, I think it was an opportunity to, to, you know, you have created a pretty good template, reconcile our, our input with that so that, so that it's, maybe there's a working session that happens so that, so that what, so that what becomes, what ultimately is initiated is, is sort of like, you know, a, a document that incorporates the planning boards and your thoughts into whatever. Anything else on the discussion?
I just want to thank everybody for participating in this. Mr. Norman, you as a resource to me personally, I speak only to me, has been very, very useful. You've said other things to us. And I just want to know, I appreciate that kind of information and the resource that you are to, to me and research on all of this. So I thank everyone else who has participated in this discussion. I think it's very, very useful.
It's great to be meeting in person again. So thank you for, for showing up. I know that this is, this is a little difficult, more difficult than just tuning into your Zoom box, but it's, it's great to be here and meeting in person.
Thank you for letting us speak. Thank you for letting us speak.
Oh, my pleasure. You're very welcome. So that, I think, closes out the discussion. I have potential amendments to zoning ordinance on marijuana cultivation. Any board staff members? Next meeting day. Okay, so.
I, I don't want to stand this.
No, no.
I'm just long, but I am representative to the Community Preservation Committee. And I feel obliged to report to this group every time we had a. I'm very excited about the, what's called abbreviation, the CDC, CPC. I'm getting used to that. They're doing a marvelous job. And it's early on, but with this community preservation business, I think that it's going to be very, very useful. It's going to be very exciting for people. The committee has had a couple of listening sessions. One at the Greenfield Pool Park, another one at the Market Co-op. And they've gotten a lot of people excited about this. And I just wanted to mention that it's going to be about somewhere, depending upon what the state agrees to, to match, there'll probably be available to Greenfield around $250,000 to use on projects. And the initial preliminary project applications are due in by September 30th. And then the group will take the time to discuss and work with the people who are interested in bringing projects forward. And we're looking at the November, the end of November for the full application to be submitted to us. And between that and the early spring, let's say March or so, the committee will be looking in very much depth and detail and reviewing all of those applications toward making recommendations to the city council, hopefully in June or July of next year. So there's a long timeframe, but I'm just, I had my first meeting with them and I was just so blown away by the, the work that has already been done. And the enthusiasm of the people on the committee is marvelous. I've never seen anything like it in, other than the planning board, of course. But I've never seen anything like it in a disciplined organization like that. And I, I said my, my, I really send my praise to them for what they're doing. And I hope to be part of that.
How are they getting word out to the community about the application?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the first part.
How are they getting word out to the community so people can apply?
Well, there have been a couple of public meetings. We're looking to have a table at the Fairgrounds. And you can certainly go on the website and get every piece of detail that you need to look at that. So the Community Preservation Committee. And all of the presentations that have been given are there. And as well as all of the forums and some of the guidelines and people to contact. So I just hope that eventually everyone in Greenfield learns about this, this project that is coming up because it's amazing. And there will be a lot more money coming available over the next several years. And it is not to be used to supplement any of the shortcomings of the budget. Not going to the police department or, right? And that's important, you know, that's, that's very important, that it is to be outside of the realm of the, of the budget altogether.
Do you have any sense of the kind of projects that are coming to me?
The only one that, that we have seen in writing is from the Fairgrounds to do some renovation. And I'm not aware of any others. George made a plea for some looking at bike trails. So there's a lot of recreation. There's been conversation about it, but in terms of applications, there's been nothing specific yet. But I hope that it comes soon.
George, you have?
Yeah, I have a report that dovetails with this. Because just as David is the planning board rep to the Community Preservation Committee, I'm the planning board rep to the master plan implementation committee. And we had a long discussion about the CPC and this, this process at our last meeting. And we were both enthusiastic about how potential projects might dovetail with the master plan goals therein. But we're also daunted by this timeline. It's so tight as far as these pre-applications getting to the end of September. And had a similar question of how was we going to get them? Because there were some people who attended the August, I think it was August or July rollout of, of, in this room of the committee. And the people who were there were enthusiastic, but it's the middle of summer, so a lot of people might not be aware of it. And so Panda Reftedman, who is the chair of the Master Plan Implementation Committee, was going to contact Travis, is it, who's the chair?
Yes.
And try to have some kind of joint press release or something like this to get, because it's a short timeframe. The pre-application sounds relatively informal, but you have to get something in writing that is required. And so just as I had some ideas and some other people had ideas, you got to, you know, kind of get them down into something more practical or something like that. So, so it is a great opportunity, but it's a little daunting to get things in so quickly. So we focus on that one too.
I'll commit, well, I'll commit that to them as well. I'll convey, well, I'll convey that to them as well.
Is it then going to be established by like national law or anything or is that our discretion?
No, it's our own discretion as far as I know.
Interesting. Anything else? Our next meeting day, oh, so the 15th, I was talking to Eric and we're considering, there's, there's no business on the agenda, but maybe given the, because I was going to be out of town that week, but I think I am going to be in town that week. So maybe we could, at the next meeting possibly consider, you know, looking, being pretty close to Counselor Disorder's proposal and debating that and sort of working together with, um, the joint forces to consider some of that. So maybe, maybe we should meet on the 15th. We are meeting, we're scheduled to meet on the 29th with FERCog, which is two weeks later, not a regularly scheduled meeting, but we wanted to meet with FERCog to, to look at the open space community development ordinance that they're, they're sort of thinking about for us. So that's on the 29th. So maybe we, there's a, the options to sort of have two meetings cascading that way to not have our first meeting in October.
Yeah, I would suggest, I agree with you about having the 15th focused on, especially because these things are moving ahead for the council. I think that'd be great to have that. And also the, because we did deliberate about the French King.
Right.
So we have to say we do that in the 15th.
Yeah, okay, that sounds good. So we will meet on the 15th.
In person.
In person. And with that, listeners.
Move to dinner.
I'll say, one ninety seconds, any further discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. We're adjourned. Thank you.